Hi Barbara.
Hi Father.
We're on practice mode, we're not broadcasting quite yet.
Well, that's good because it kicked me out and said I was a post attendee.
Oh boy.
And so I had to relaunch it.
Mine says Tom Macken. Why does mine say Tom Macken?
It does say Tom Macken.
I'll fix that. Rename St. Mark Parish A. And then let's change my video.
Yeah, kinda.
Oh, is that okay? Look, I don't need to put my logo. It just says St. Mark Parish. Is that okay? I don't know how I did that. And then I'll just mute myself and I'm ready to roll, so.
Right.
Alright Father, so I was gonna start off by just saying hi to you and hi to them.
Yep.
And then just saying, we're gonna go through a few housekeeping items.
Okay, and you're gonna do that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then let them know that Tom's on Facebook and Julie's on the Zoom.
Yep.
And that we'll be answering questions after each section.
Okay.
Can people get a copy of your PowerPoint?
It's already on our website.
Okay, cuz I had somebody ask me today.
Yep, it's already there.
Okay.
And this video will be there probably sometime tomorrow morning.
Alright, and then after I do the little housekeeping stuff, I'll say, alright Father, would you please lead us in prayer? And then you can take it from there.
Perfect.
How's that?
Perfect. I wanna do that. I'm just getting the Facebook thing together here. Okay, should I go, should I put it live? Alright, we're broadcasting.
How many people are we supposed to be having?
I think it was 180 something the last time I checked. Okay, we should be going live. Alright, we got folks joining us. We're up to 74. And it should be on Facebook now, too.
Yep, it's live on Facebook.
Okay, great.
I can see them slowly coming in.
Oh, you can see that too?
Yeah, the participant number is adding.
Yep. I've got the Blessed Mother there watching over my shoulder. You see her?
I got my Blessed Mother there.
Keeping an eye on us.
That's right.
I see some questions coming up. Yep. Everyone is automatically muted. Yes, this is actually a webinar. So you can see us, but you can't... We don't have your video. But you can, as you see, you can ask questions via the Q&amp;A at the bottom. You're welcome. Sucks some folks are still joining.
Yeah, it's climbing.
Yeah, we just broke 100. So Deacon Marty asked a question. This is a webinar function on Zoom, so you can't enter, enter the conversation with your voice. You can ask a question with the question and answer feature.
We'll get to that question.
Yes, Sam, we will get to that question.
And that one.
Yes, all these questions will be answered in time. They're, they're all in my presentation.
Alright, when would you like to start?
I think maybe we should get started.
One more minutes?
Letting everybody know kinda what's happening. Maybe we'll give them another minute or two. I see the number is climbing.
Okay. Yes.
Welcome everyone who's joining us. We're just waiting a few moments to begin cuz the number of participantes is slowly climbing. So we just wanna give some time to let folks join in the webinar before we get started. We got lots of questions popping up already. And we will get to them as we move along. I'm sorry Nick. That you can't, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see you too. You'll have to comb your hair again for church on Sunday, so you, tonight was a practice run. Yes, you will be able to access this information after the meeting. A recording of this webinar will be on our website tomorrow in the morning. And also my PowerPoint presentation is, will, I believe it's already on our website. So you can access my presentation and the meeting tomorrow on our website. So just to mention again that this is a webinar. So you are able to see and hear us, but the folks who are dialing in were not able to see or hear you. You can interact with us using the question and answer feature. Okay, so maybe Barbara, you wanna get started? It's 5:00 after.
Yeah, so hi Father.
Hi Barbara.
Hi. We do, we do wish we could see your faces tonight, but we're excited to see your faces on Sunday. So as Father's been going over, we have just a few housekeeping items. Julie Tomko is here and she will be answering and helping us assist with the questions that you're typing in. And if we are gonna answer them live, she'll send them up to us and we'll answer them. Also, Tom Macken is with us and he's gonna be taking control of the questions off of Facebook. And he'll also be sending questions up live to us so that we can all have the ability to hear the answers for this. And if you have a question, please feel free to put it in the Q&amp;A box. And either Julie will take that question or she'll send it to us. And we'll answer that question as we go through the presentation. So Father has a PowerPoint that he's gonna be going through and it's divided into sections. And if we could wait till the end of the section, and if you have a question for that section, then send it at that point and we'll try to answer as many questions from that section as we can. What we don't answer from that section, we will answer at the end of the presentation. Okay? I think that's all I have to go with right now, Father. Would you please lead us all off in prayer?
Of course. I'd like to start with the prayer for the Navina to the Holy Spirit as we are anticipating the Feast of Pentecost this Sunday. So let us pray in the name of the Father, of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Come Holy Spirit, fill the hearts of your faithful. And kindling you them the fire of your love. Send forth your spirit and they shall be created, and you shall renew the face of the earth. O God, who by the light of the Holy Spirit did instruct the hearts of the faithful, grant that by the same Holy Spirit we may be truly wise and ever to rejoice, enjoy his consolations through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Okay, so I'm going, I'm going to begin with my presentation. I'm actually going to share my screen, so you should be able to see my presentation on your screen as I'm sharing it. As we already mentioned, this presentation will be available on our website tomorrow. In case you wanna go back to something, or if you don't have a chance to stay for the whole thing. So we have created a little acronym that will help us to understand the situation that we're in right now. And our acronym is M.A.S.S., probably something, a word that's very familiar to all of us. It stands for Monitor, Attend, Safe, Strong. Monitor, we want you to monitor your environment and yourself. We want you to make an informed decision whether you should attend Mass or not. And when you arrive for a Mass, we ask you to be safe, to use all of the precautions that the experts tell us we should. And then we want you to remember to stay strong. That we've been down a long road together and it's probably gonna be a while till we're back to normal, but we are all in this together. We can be St. Mark's strong together. So as Barbara mentioned, my presentation is divided into these four main sections. So I would like to start now with the section about Monitor. You need, as we know, to monitor our environment and to monitor ourself. So what does that mean in regards to coming to church? Well, we want to monitor our environment. Remember that Archbishop Laurie has dispensed the faithful from the obligation to attend Mass. So there is no obligation at this time to attend Mass. So you are not a bad Catholic if you decide at this time that it's just not right for you to attend Mass. We want you to remember if you are a part of that high-risk population that you maybe should consider not coming back to Mass at this time. The CDC says that that population includes 65 and above. The Archdiocese in the state of Maryland has said 60 and above. So depending on who you listen to there, it's, it's right about in that 60, 65 age group. And of course, if you have other underlying health concerns or conditions. I'm not saying that you can't come to Mass. We're not gonna stop you from coming to Mass, but you wanna take that into consideration. And then of course, there may be some folks who are just not comfortable coming to Mass at this time. And as I mentioned before, that's okay. Now, the church environment, what have we been doing to prepare the church? Well, we've taken everything out of the church that we might consider to be a high-touch item, such as hymnals, the kneelers on the back of the chair, the very little paper anywhere, or prayer books, or books of any kind. We've taken out things that can pass germs from one worshiper to another. Holy water is only available in bottles from a staff member that you can take with you. There is no holy water at the doors of the church. We have sanitizer available in church. And we have created, actually created physical distancing in our church. We have the advantage of having chairs that can move, unlike a lot of churches that have fixed pews. So we have, our maintenance staff and volunteers have been hard at work creating physical distancing in the church. And I'd like to show you some of those pictures now. I have four pictures of what the interior of the church looks like. So as I go through these pictures, you can see that we have spaced out the rows in church. You've actually removed a lot of chairs. So you can see here, in this photo particularly, that there is literally six feet of space between you and the person sitting in front of you and the person sitting behind you. So we have created physical distancing within the church itself. Now, what we haven't done is taken chairs out of the rows because households sit together. So if you come to church and your household has three, or four, or five people in it, you can sit there. If you come to church and your household has one person in it, you would take a seat and there needs to be four seats on either side. The social distancing, six feet, is four chairs between households. So this is also why we haven't been able to answer a question that a lot of people have asked, which is, well, the answer to that is that it depends. It depends on the size of the households. If we get a lot of large households that come, we'll fit more people in church. If we have small households, our capacity will be smaller. So a little later on, I'm gonna talk about how we're gonna handle that. So you'll see, as you see here, we have created that physical distance inside the church. The restrooms are limited to one person per restroom. One person per restroom use. We're also not gonna be allowing people to line up for the restroom. There are some markers on the floor, but we're not gonna have long lines for the restroom. The church is thoroughly cleaned after each use. And we're also asking you to please not bring food pantry donations to the church because we want to eliminate the collection of things inside. We're asking you to please, if you would continue bringing those food pantry donations on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 12:00 noon to 2:00 PM directly to the food pantry itself. And many of you have been very generous with that during this time. So we would like to ask you to continue doing that. We have to monitor ourselves. You know, the question we should ask is, do we feel well? And if the answer to that is no, we should consider not, we should not come to church if we do not feel well. We're asking you to take your temperature at home, which follows the guidelines of the Archdiocese of Baltimore. We're not mandated to take temperatures at the door of church. I already mentioned the high-risk populations and children. I wanna talk a little bit about our children. The Archdiocese of Baltimore says that any child over the age of two has to wear a mask, has to wear a face covering at Mass, and while on the grounds of the church. And for some children, that may not be a problem. For others, it might be an issue. So if your children are not able to keep that cover, face covering on, you might consider staying home with them or attending Mass in shifts. Also, you know, if your children aren't able to not touch things, you might wanna think about whether now's the right time to bring them to church. Okay, that's the end of that section.
Alright Father, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Alright, so Sam wants to know, where is the physical location of the food pantry?
The food pantry is located at the rectory. And the address of the rectory is 812 Record Road. It's literally around the corner from the church where Record and Old Falston meet. It's a little bit down Record Road. And if you're looking at the rectory, the food pantry is to your left. So you can pull in the driveway, park, and walk your stuff there. Or you can even drive around the circle and it's a very short walk to the food pantry.
And this is also where we should be bringing our casseroles. Is that correct, Father?
Yes, thank you. Yes, that's also the place where you can bring your casseroles to our daily bread. For our daily bread, I mean.
We should not be dropping them off at the parish office.
We would like to ask folks not to drop things off at the parish office because again, it's, we're trying to eliminate the contact points along the way.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for this part of the section that Father just went over regarding monitoring your environment and yourself?
We have a question on Facebook Live here. Barbara is asking, how will you clean those fabric seats?
Yes, well, we're asking folks to understand that we don't have the ability to clean the fabric seats. We are looking into sprays to do that. However, cleaning supplies are at a premium right now. So we would encourage you to wear perhaps long pants or jeans or something like that so that you're not making immediate physical contact with the cushion chairs.
Okay, I have another question. A person would like to pick up holy water bottles. Where would those be available?
The holy water bottles will be available from the folks who are on the welcome team, who you will encounter as you are coming into church. So you can ask them for a holy water bottle as you are entering or leaving church.
Another question. With regard to you, one person using the bathroom, what happens if the kids have to go with their parents?
If, if a child needs to be accompanied by a parent, that's okay.
Alright, will there be a contact tracing process? If a person attends Mass and tests positive, will the parish be notified so people can quarantine and take precaution if they were at that Mass also?
Honestly, that is something I'm gonna have to look into. I don't know the answer to that question right now.
Alright, another question. If I'm not going to attend Mass, where and when can I give my envelopes that have cash in them?
Okay, so the parish office is open Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So you're welcome to drop them off when the parish office is open.
Alright, so is the holy water enough for one person or for a family?
I would say it would be enough for a family. The bottles are about yay big.
Will there be any outdoor masses, or can you hear the mass from the parking lot?
We are not planning on having outdoor masses at this time. Obviously, logistically, it would be very difficult to have Mass outside. So we are not planning that. And no, you can't hear it from the parking lot because we're not allowed to bring holy, and we're also not allowed to bring holy communion out onto the parking lot. And actually, this brings up another point. I mentioned about the capacity of the church. I would like folks to know that we have set up the McCall Center Auditorium as an auxiliary mass location, actually not auxiliary, as a mass location. So that if the church becomes full, we can have Mass in the McCall Center Auditorium. So we're not gonna be turning folks away from Mass.
Alright, if I don't go to church because of my age, when can I receive holy communion?
Well, you're not able to receive holy communion outside of physically coming to church. So you would have to come to Mass to receive holy communion.
I have two more questions here from Facebook Live.
Okay.
Janice is asking, can they bring a cloth from home to put on their seats?
Absolutely, as long as they take it home with them.
Okay, and then Mary is asking, will there be a section marked off for high-risk individuals if they feel the need to attend?
There will not be separate high-risk individual section, no. Are we ready to move to the next section? Okay.
I'm clear.
Alright, I think this next section will contain a lot of things that people have been wondering about as well. So you've made the decision to attend Mass at this time. Or maybe in another week or two, you're, you're gonna come to Mass. We're gonna keep our regular Mass schedule, so Saturday night at 4:00, Sunday morning 7:30, 9:00, and 11:00. As I already mentioned, there will be a Mass in the McCall Center Auditorium should there be the need for that, should it overflow from the church. So our goal here is not to turn anyone away from Mass. So our Mass times do remain the same. So what to, what to expect when you are coming to church? The first thing to know is that confessions are being heard Saturday afternoons at our normal time of 3:00 PM. And those confessions are taking place in the chapel now. And the welcome team, who will greet you when you arrive, will show you where to line up for confession and will help with that. So when you arrive to Mass, we're asking you to please arrive a half hour early for Mass to allow time to get into church and to get seated and settled. Please bring your mask from home for you and for any of the children who are with you. You will be greeted at the main doors of the church by members of our welcome team. They will have bottles of hand sanitizer. They will offer you a little bit of hand sanitizer. Then they will direct you to go into the church. Access to the church will be by the main doors only, the doors of, that lead to the North X. So you will go inside the North X and on the floor there, you will find stickers that say, stand here. And you will, you and your household will stand on those stickers and wait to be seated. Here's a picture of what those stickers look like. They're, they're all over the floor of the church to tell you exactly where to stand so that you're socially distant from folks in other households. So you're gonna wait in the North X and a member of the welcome team will take you and will seat you inside the church. So they will literally show you to a seat. We're gonna begin seating with the side sections, moving to the front, and then the main sections. So that's how we're gonna know when the church is about to be full. And then we will need to use the hall. So that's how we're gonna gauge that. Then when you arrive at your seat, you'll, you'll prepare for Mass as you normally would by saying your prayers or reading the readings. A little bit about the readings in the next slide. So some things that you can't do when you're in church. You can't choose your own seat. We are going to sit you in church. We are going to sit you in church because, as I already mentioned, this is how we're going to know when the church is excuse me, is reaching its capacity. We're not kneeling during Mass. The kneelers have been removed, again, because that's a high-touch area of the church. We're asking you to please refrain from physically greeting people who are not part of your household. So I know when you come to church, you're probably going to see church friends that you haven't seen in a long time. And it's kind of our natural instinct to want to hug them or kiss them. We really try to ask you not to do that. You know, we come the elbow bump greeting and the greeting from afar. So we're going to use those to greet our friends. We're going to ask you to please not congregate in the aisles or line up for the restrooms or in the North X. And we're not going to allow folks to write in the Book of Intentions. You can submit your prayer intentions that we're praying for at Mass via our website. And we are writing those down as soon as we get them so that they can be remembered at Mass. You will be allowed to light candles when you come to church. We're going to have those sticks there. We're going to have clean ones in one box and used ones in another. So you can take a clean one every time you light a candle. Okay, so what to expect during Mass? So there's no hymnals. So I like to read the readings in the hymnal. What am I going to do? Well, we're encouraging you to please download the My Parish app, which some of you may already have. We had a kind of a push with that a few years back. That might be on your phone. If not, you can download it from the App Store or wherever you put apps on your phone. And you can download the My Parish app and select St. Mark Falston. We have directions on our website about how to do that at saintmarkfalconston.org, where it talks about connecting with us. There's a video about how to do that. And you'll see here I've highlighted where it says Worship Aid. So when you click on that, you'll see a program that will have all of the prayers and the readings of the Mass in it for that particular Sunday. Now, if you don't have a smartphone or you don't want to use your smartphone in that capacity during Mass, we will have a limited number of printed programs that we will have available for you. You can just ask the member of the welcome team for a printed program. We'll give that to you. And we ask you to take that home with you when you leave and recycle it at home. We're not going to be reusing those. Some other things that you can do in church. We're not going to exchange the sign of peace. We had been exchanging it kind of with a gesture or a wave. We're just going to eliminate that part of the Mass. It's actually optional. So we're going to choose to exercise that option and not have a sign of peace. And we're also not going to be singing. Now, I know this may fill some people with joy because they don't like singing in church. But other people, it might upset them because they like to sing in church. Well, the professional music associations and also the CDC is saying that when you sing, the droplets from your mouth can be projected even further and at a higher speed. So you increase the risk of spreading anything that you have to other people. So right now, we're not going to be singing in church. So the prayers, all the prayers will be recited. And then at the normal times when we would sing a hymn, the orchestra piece is simply going to play musical selections during that time. Okay. Now, this is the largest
All right, Father.
We want to take some because this is the largest of the sections. So maybe we should break here and have some questions.
Yes. I have several already.
Okay.
All right, is there a place for high-risk individuals in the chapel? And can you broadcast to them there?
There is not. The chapel has become our chair storage room. We had no other place to put all the chairs from church in our chapel now. And we don't have the ability to pass any of those.
All right. The next question, will palms be distributed in the near future?
Palms will be distributed in the near future, not right now. The Archdiocese is telling us not to distribute anything at this time. Palms, bulletins, anything like that.
And can you please clarify the times of masses that will be for overflow?
They will be at the same times. So they may start a little later, just to get people in, but they will be at the same times, 4:00 p.m., 7:30, 9:00, and 11:00.
So the overflow masses at the McCall Center will be the same times as the masses in church?
Yes.
And will the overflow masses be said by another priest?
Yes, Father Foley and I will be sharing duty between the hall and the church. So yes, it will be an actual Mass. It won't be watching it on TV or anything like that, a Mass celebrated in the room.
Can I bring my own missile to Mass?
Yes, you can bring your own missile to Mass as long as you take it home with you.
So this one says the same thing. Can I bring my own personal Mass journal? Yes.
Yes.
Can I bring my own readings? Yes. Could the chairs be stored in the white building?
The chairs are very heavy, and there are a lot of them. So it's taken a great amount of effort to move them this far into the chapel. So at this point, we're not able to move them again.
All right, Tom, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question from Facebook Live. Colleen is asking if she must use the hand sanitizer.
I suppose if you have some medical reason why you can't, I suppose that that's okay. But we're encouraging folks to use the sanitizer when they arrive to church.
Okay, that's all I have at the moment.
Okay.
All right, I'm re-asking this question because I was not sufficiently clear. I want to go to Mass and receive holy communion. The criteria being used now sort of argues against me attending Mass, although not totally prohibiting it.
That is true. We are simply sharing the guidelines that we have been given that are understood to the best of the medical knowledge at this time. And it is up to you to make a decision, a prudent decision, whether or not you should attend Mass.
Okay.
Okay, ready to?
Yes.
Okay. So what are we doing for holy communion? There will be two stations for communion at the corners of the sanctuary. It's the same in the church and the McCall Center. So you'll see a picture of one of those stations right here on your screen. It's a small white table that are in kind of the sides of the sanctuary. We're going to ask you to please follow the instructions of the welcome team for coming up to receive holy communion. Everyone will be coming up using the main aisle. So even if you're on the sides, you will go to the middle, come up the main aisle, go to the station, and return using the sides, and then back across. So we'll show you here a picture of the floor. In the aisle, you'll see the white dots are where we're asking you to stand as you're waiting for the line for communion. And those are six feet apart so that there's distancing leading up to communion. The white signs also go across the front of the sanctuary. So you'll see them across the front of the sanctuary as you approach that table for holy communion. As I mentioned, there will be a white table there between you and the communion minister. We're asking you to lower your mask, receive holy communion. We're asking you to please consider everyone receiving in the hand. You place the host in your mouth, and then you return the mask to your mouth, and then you go back to your seat. So to help folks visualize this, we have a little video, which I'm going to play right now. I'm getting a little notice on my computer that there seems to be some problem with my internet connection here. So was everyone able to see that video, Barbara?
I didn't see it very well. I missed her, actually. I only saw one person receiving communion.
Okay, let me try and play that again and see if the internet will cooperate. The sound in the video were a little off sync on my computer here.
The second time was better.
Okay. All right, well, maybe the third time will be the charm. But I don't think I'll show it a third time. We will make sure that this video is also available on our website tomorrow if you'd like to watch the video.
All right, I'm sorry, got a couple of questions ready.
Go ahead.
Okay, so is the 9:00 a.m. Sunday Mass the only one that will be live?
Yes.
Can I wear gloves?
You can wear gloves, but you cannot receive holy communion with gloves. So you will have to take those gloves off to receive holy communion.
What if someone chooses not to go for communion? Should they just remain in their seat?
We are asking everyone to go up in the communion procession to maintain that distancing. So if you choose not to receive communion, you would simply pass the table and go back to your seat.
Will you be wearing gloves while giving out communion?
We will. The priest will not be wearing gloves while giving out communion. We will be wearing a face mask, though.
Okay, Tom, do you have any questions about holy communion?
No, nothing on this side.
For the communion procession, do the side areas process outside to the North X to line up?
No, everyone will stay inside the church. And your whole row will come across to the main aisle. So if you attend the 7:30 Mass, you'll know that the choir side, everyone comes across the front to go up the main aisle. So that's how we're going to do it. And there will be welcome team members there who will be helping with the flow of traffic. Because I know it's hard to kind of conceptualize it while I'm speaking. But I think once you're in the church, you'll totally understand what we're talking about.
Okay.
Ready to move along?
Ready to move along.
All right. So the last part of the Mass is the dismissal from Mass. Now, this is a time normally where we would kind of get very close together as people are leaving Mass, which we can't do. So we're asking you to please follow the directions of the welcome team. And we will be dismissing row by row from the church so that we can maintain that physical distance between households as we're leaving Mass. There will be baskets in the North X for your offertory envelopes. We're not going to be taking up the collection through the congregation because, again, that's a high-touch thing, the basket. We're going to have baskets, stationary baskets in the North X. As you're leaving, you can simply drop your envelope in that basket. And we very much appreciate that. We're asking you to please proceed directly to your cars. And again, avoid congregating in the aisles or in the North X or on the parking lot. Simply proceed to your car and begin to leave. Okay? So that's the dismissal. It's pretty simple. It will take some time, guaranteed. We just simply ask you to please remain patient as we dismiss row by row. It's not going to take that much time, but a little more time than we're used to.
All right, so for dismissal, will you dismiss from the last row first?
We are dismissing from the back row first, back to front. Communion goes front to back, dismissal is back to front.
And all these instructions are the same for what will be taking place over at the McCall Center?
Exactly the same, yes.
Now, the 9 o'clock Mass will still be livestreamed?
It will still be livestreamed, yes.
Tom, do you have anything?
No, we have nothing new on Facebook Live.
Okay.
All right, I have one more.
Okay.
Folks leave early sometimes. Is that going to be able to happen?
People leave early from Mass? I didn't know such things happened. We're asking you to please not do that because, again, it's going to break the physical distancing. You know, we're trying to keep things moving in one-way direction here. So we're asking you to please not do that. The Mass is really not going to be as long as we're used to. We're used to it being about an hour. Mass isn't going to be that long because there's no singing. So we're going to move through it a pretty good clip. Okay, so moving on to safety. We want you to be safe and be safe when you're here on our campus. And we've been, as I said, we've been working really hard to prepare for that, to keep you safe here. As I mentioned, if you don't feel comfortable at this time coming back to church, and again, I understand that, we are going to continue to livestream a Sunday, every Sunday, the 9:00 a.m. Mass. So that will be available for you. We're also going to continue streaming daily Mass. So that will be available for you. We're working very hard to come up with a permanent streaming in our church so that the quality will be a little bit better and the camera placement will be a little bit better. But that's kind of a, that's a large project that we're working on at this time. So I'd ask you to have patience with us and have patience with my technological abilities. They've been quite stretched during this time. So I'm trying my hardest here. We'd encourage you, if you don't feel safe coming to Mass, to remember that the church is open Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So you can make a visit to the Blessed Sacrament whenever the church is open, Monday to Friday, 10:00 to 4:00. Another way to remain safe is to remember that social distancing between those who are of different households. And again, that social distancing is for seats. Please follow the floor markings that you'll see. They're very, very clear when you're inside the church building. We ask you to always wear a mask when you're on our church campus or in the church, except, of course, during holy communion as you're receiving communion. And to please listen to the instructions of the welcome team. These folks are very generous folks who are volunteering to help us. We need a lot of volunteers to make this successful. So we want to show real sincere Christian charity on both sides for those who are on the team and those who are receiving the instructions from the team. So we want to hold on to that Christian charity above everything. Okay, questions from that safety section?
I've got lots of them.
Oh, boy, okay.
So I have a question. What if an ambulance is needed for a medical emergency? What's your plan?
Well, our plan is that the front of the church will be very much accessible as it normally is. And actually, we're better equipped to handle that at this point because, as you saw, there are six feet of separation between the chairs. So there's actually more room than normal if someone needed help.
The next question, we were asked if we would consider taking communion in the hand. Do we still reserve the right to receive communion on the tongue?
You do reserve the right to receive holy communion on the tongue. That is the universal law of the church. So you do retain that right. However, I do believe it would be an act of charity to receive on the hand for the sake of the priest or minister who's giving you holy communion and also on your own sake so that no one touches your tongue. So again, this is a prudential decision that we're asking you. We're presenting the case. We're asking you to consider that.
All right, are you allowing other activities at the campus? All right, are you allowing other activities at the campus or just church functions at this time?
The only thing allowed on the campus now are church functions. As I mentioned, the parish office is open three days a week. But again, we're even asking people to call or email ahead if they need something from the office so that we can prepare it. So right now, everything is still virtual. Everything else is still virtual.
Will we be able to go inside the church during the week?
Yes, the church is open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The reason why it's those hours is that we need volunteers there inside the church to clean after a person leaves. So we need someone there, so we have needed to limit the time so we only have so many volunteers who can help with that.
Will you be having daily Mass?
Daily Mass will still be celebrated as we have been doing. However, daily Mass will not be open to the public immediately. We need some time to figure out how long it's going to take to thoroughly clean the church after it's been used on the weekend. And we also need to find out what this is going to do to our supplies. How many supplies we're going to need to go through on a weekend. Just like the grocery store, it's been hard to find cleaning supplies. So it's been hard to find cleaning supplies on a commercial level for the amounts that we need. We, our maintenance director's been getting dribs and drabs wherever he can get them and, and we think we have enough to be open on the weekends. We don't know what that's going to be like to be open during the week because the church needs to be thoroughly cleaned every time a Mass happens. So right now, we're not going to be opening for daily Mass.
All right, are there rules to follow when making a visit to church?
There, well, there are. When you make a visit to church during the week, we're asking you to please not sit in the cushion chairs. We've put metal chairs along the front of the church, in front of the sanctuary platform step. And we ask you to sit there and then when you depart, the volunteer thoroughly wipes down that chair. So we're, we're trying to maintain that cleanliness during the week as well.
If the priest gives the host on the tongue, what will the priest do to clean his hands for the next person?
Every time, the Archdiocese says that every time the priest, deacon, or lay minister gives Holy Communion to a person on the tongue, they have to put the suborium down on the table, take hand sanitizer, sanitize their hands before they give communion to the next person. So there will be a bottle of hand sanitizer on those communion tables.
I have some young friends with young kids who say, oh, well, I'm sure they'll, these kids will just take these masks off. What do we have to address that issue?
Well, the welcome team members are going to be kind of keeping an eye on what's happening. And the welcome team member will very kindly come over and say that, you know, the child has to wear the mask. And if a child or an adult decides that they don't want to do that, the member of the welcome team will invite them to go home and watch online, to watch a livestream. You must have a face covering when you're inside of church. If not, we will kindly ask you to leave.
All right, would parishioners be able to donate cleaning supplies to help the church?
Yes, actually, that's one of my items on the next slide. If you have cleaning supplies that you have access to, I don't know how you have, have access to them. If you would like to donate them to the church, we would be happy to receive them. So you could bring them to the office, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, 10:00 to 4:00. You could also bring them to the church and leave them with the volunteer who's monitoring the inside of the church. If you have supplies you would like to donate to the cause, that would be wonderful.
What about donations to the pour box?
We will still be using the pour box. It will be emptied after every Mass like it usually is and wiped down.
All right, Tom, do you have anything?
Yes, Linda is asking, is there any timeframe as to when people are required to attend Mass?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Like, I guess she's asking about the dispensation. Is there, is there any timeline when that's going to be eliminated?
I have not heard that at this point. I would, I would venture to guess that that is not going to be, that the obligation isn't going to be restored for quite some time.
And again, someone asked, how many people can the seat, the church seat? They must have missed that, but.
Right, so again, we are going to seat people in the church as they arrive. And as the church fills, we're going to know when it's full. Because of social distancing and the size of the households, if, if you can get a lot more people in, in larger households than like single households, so there's not a fixed number.
That's all I have from Facebook.
Alrighty.
Hold on one more time.
Okay.
How do we know where we go to see the Mass from home? I don't know how to do that.
Okay, so you can go to our St. Mark Facebook page, which is St. Mark, excuse me, our, our St. Mark website, which is stmarkfaulston.org. And there you will see a box that says livestreaming. When you click on that, it, that page, you can then click on where it says YouTube and that will take you to our YouTube page. We, I also put a link every morning on Facebook. If you follow our Facebook page, I put a link there that will take you directly to our YouTube channel to watch the Mass.
What happens if the McCall Center fills up for Mass?
Well, if the McCall Center fills up for Mass, that's going to be a good problem to have. And at this point, I'm, I don't think that that's going to happen. The places that have opened for Mass across the country have seen about 20% of their normal attendance come back to Mass. So if we're in that 20% ballpark, which I think we will be from what I've been hearing from other priests who have done surveys and things like that, we're going to be okay for a while. Should that situation change, we're going to talk about how we're going to address that. And I hope it does because I hope people feel more comfortable. But we're going to need to address that down the road a little bit.
So where would be the best place to drop off cleaning supplies if I'd like to donate to the church?
The best place would be the office, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, from 10:00 to 4:00. But if that doesn't work for you, you could also drop them to the volunteer who's inside the church, Monday through Friday, from 10:00 to 4:00.
Will people be allowed to watch Mass from the North X?
People will not be allowed to watch Mass from the North X. We have removed the seats back there and blocked the seats. If you're, if a young person needs to leave for a little while, it would be okay to be there for a little while to calm the young person down, but we're not allowing people to watch from the North X.
What kind of cleaning supplies do you need?
The thing we need the most of are the, like the Clorox wipes.
I have someone who would like to know some more about confession.
Okay, so confession.
If I'm, if I'm coming for confession, yeah.
So if you're coming for confession, there will be a welcome team member to greet you in the North X. Please use those main doors of the church. They will show you where to line up and you're being held inside the chapel. So you will go in the chapel. There will be a chair for you and a chair for the priest. There will also be a kneeler for you if you would like to go anonymously. The chairs and the kneelers will be six feet away from the priest. We would ask, and we're going to ask you to please wipe the chair or kneeler down after you have used it.
What happens if someone has to use the restroom during Mass?
Well, if you have to use the restroom, as you saw in those pictures, that's six feet of distance. There's plenty of space for you to stand up and walk around the people who are sitting to get to the restroom. But we're going to really try to ask folks to make adequate restroom arrangements before you leave for church and that the restrooms in the church would be a matter of kind of emergency only. Okay, should I go to the last section here? This is a pretty brief section. We're getting close to our, to our hour together here. Our last section is strong. You know, our logo for St. Mark, the symbol for St. Mark is a lion and strong. They're not afraid of anything. And I'd like our St. Mark family to remember that lion and to be strong at this time. And to remember that, that this is temporary. You know, it's not going to be forever. I know that our church routine is comforting. We'd like to be comfortable in church and the changes are going to make us uncomfortable, especially the first time you come back. I totally understand that, that you're going to make us uncomfortable because it's different than the way I'm used to celebrating Mass. But to remember that it won't last forever and the restrictions will be gradually loosened. We don't have a timetable for that, but we know that they will be loosened. As I've already mentioned, livestreaming is here today at 9:00 AM and the daily Mass at 9:00 AM. I realize for our daily Mass goers, there's probably some disappointment that daily Mass will not be open to the public right away. But I would again, ask for your patience for that. It's going to take us some time to, to kind of ease back into this. I already mentioned the sanitizing supplies. Thank you to those who are willing to donate them, we do need them. And if you would like to help on the welcome team for the weekend masses, we do need more volunteers. So there will be a sign up every Monday. There will be a new sign up for the, that coming weekend. And we're asking all of our volunteers to attend a training on the Friday night of the weekend that they're volunteering so that everybody's on the same page. So that sign up genius for weekend masses for the welcome team will be available on our website and our Facebook page on Monday every week. So that's our acronym, M-A-T-R-I-N, Safe and Strong. Says we look forward to, to coming back to Mass at our church home. So I would imagine there's probably some more questions. I see the little, the little light blinking, so why don't we, I'm going to close my PowerPoint here. And let's go to questions.
All right, when I receive communion, I always respond amen after I hear the body of Christ. Should parishioners refrain from saying amen when they receive communion?
No, you're, you're free to say amen, absolutely.
All right, will we be having Eucharistic adoration anytime soon?
Yes, I'm going to start on the first Fridays of the month. So the first Friday is not this Friday, but Friday week. So we will be having adoration on first Friday for this time being, that, that 10:00 to 4:00 timeframe.
All right, one of my next questions is, how many people listened to this tonight?
I see 115 here, I think it was up to 120 at one point I noticed. I wasn't really looking at it. I don't know how many people were on Facebook, Tom, if you have.
We were up between 40 and 45 at one point, so.
Yeah, I think our attendance was closer to 130.
Okay. And if, if you know folks from St. Mark, maybe who weren't able to attend, as I mentioned, this will, the recording will be on our website tomorrow.
All right, so will masses be shorter in time to allow for church cleaning?
Yes, masses will be shorter because we do need more time for cleaning and there will not be any singing, so Mass will be shorter.
No, we have no other questions on Facebook Live at this time.
Okay, wow, look at that, it's exactly eight o'clock. Shall I, shall I finish up with the prayer?
Let's do that.
Okay, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end, amen. St. Mark, pray for us. In the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
I have another.
Okay.
Sorry. They're not done.
Okay, go ahead.
Where's the sign up genius?
The sign up genius will be on our website and on our Facebook page on Mondays, starting Monday for the following Sunday.
Okay.
Okay.
If we, no. If we choose to take communion on the tongue, may we receive it after everybody else receives?
No, no, you have to receive at the same time as part of the regular communion procession.
All right, and I just have several people that are saying, thank you, Father.
Okay, thanks, everybody. It was a pleasure to be with you. I look forward to seeing you in real life sometime soon.
Thank you, Father.
Okay.
All right.
Good night, everyone. Bye.